Thank you Chair, just a few brief housekeeping items. Certainly on behalf of my service, welcome to a new colleague, Leanna Turpin, who's joined as Senior Democratic Services Officer. This is her first formal meeting of committee. In terms of apologies for today's meeting, I apologize from Council Sue Walker. I'd also advise the Deputy Chair is running somewhat late but will be joining us as soon as practicable. In terms of the items before members on today's agenda, I do need to draw to your attention a number of changes insofar as three applications to be withdrawn from consideration today. There's our Agenda Item 8 relating to century buildings at North John Street, Agenda Item 9 relating to the Liverpool Community Probation Centre and Agenda Item 10 relating to Gladstone House at Union Court. Again, in relation to each of those applications, it's purely a brief procedural deferral. The reports will come forward in due course, most likely to our next meeting of committee. With that in mind, I'll now revert to the Chair to take declarations of interests. Thank you.
Thanks Mike. Can I invite members to declare any interests? There doesn't appear to be any. Item 2, the minutes of the last meeting. Can I refer members to pages 4 to 8 of the agenda which comprise the minutes of our last meeting as held on the 19th of October 2021? Are the minutes agreed? Thank you. Item 3, urgent business. Mike?
Thank you Chair, I'm pleased to advise that we have no urgent items of business today. If we have the Chair to briefly pause as well, I'm pleased to advise the Deputy Chair has joined us, so we have a very brief pause to allow the Chair, Deputy Chair to take their seat in the chamber. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 4, land on Rosebury Street to the rear of Hadley Street Liverpool 8. There are no speakers for or against. Can I ask Stuart Clark, the case officer, to just summarise this and then we'll ask members if they've got any questions before I move the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, Stuart Clark from the South Team. This is a report back to members in accordance with protocols where members resolve to approve against office recommendation. It's the, all full papers are before you and as you'll see, the report is purely to recommend some reasons for refusals should members still be minded to refuse the application. That's about it, Chair, I'm afraid.
Thanks Stuart, do members have any questions? No. Can I move that the application be refused for the reasons stated in the revised case officer report and in accordance with our resolution of 19th of October? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, for the benefit of the public record, I do need to conduct a formal vote individually. So with that in mind, I'll take the Chair's vote firstly, thank you.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Thompson.
Four.
Thank you councillor Bennett.
Four.
Thank you councillor Caldwell.
Four.
Thank you councillor Hanson. Thank you councillor Marret.
Four.
Thank you councillor Prince. Thank you councillor Maloney.
Four.
Okay councillor Lake.
Four.
Thank you and councillor Key.
Four.
Thank you, just for purpose of public record, that concludes the voting. It is unanimous of those members' presence and the application is therefore now refused for the reasons stated. Chair?
Okay, thanks Mike. Item 5, 2 to 6 Lightbody Street Liverpool 5. I'm not aware of the applicant is here yet.
Chair, I believe the applicants and their agents are struggling with traffic and transport issues this morning. We do however have a presentation available and our case officer can summarise the issues related to the application in their absence so we can determine the matter. Thank you.
Can I ask the case officer to summarise this application and we'll, if the applicant survived, we can ask them questions then.
Chair, if we can just go through, obviously the applicants have provided us with their presentation. It's not for me to do that part of their presentation, but if we can just possibly just go through the slides, give councillors an opportunity to view them. And so obviously that sets the wider context for Taurus. So this is, this is the scheme and the proposal is for 194 dwellings in the form that you can see on the, on the screen now. Perhaps if we can just go to the next slide. There's a layout and obviously you've got some significant amounts of parking, you'll see as well its relationship with the canal and I'll talk about that in a moment. Next slide, again some further images. And again, and there's the site plan. I think that's it. If we can just go back to the main 3D image, that would be really helpful and just keep that on the screen, thank you. So Chair, obviously you've got a full report in front of you and unfortunately we haven't been able to get the applicants here in time to do their own presentation, but nonetheless, you've got the images there, so clearly you're able to understand the form of the development and the sort of design rationale. In terms of the site description, again, there's a detailed explanation within the report and you've seen where it is on the, on the site plan, so it's close to Stanley Dock, it's opposite the canal and the scheme has had regard to that sort of wider setting when the overall design rationale is being considered. If I could just take you through the various points within the report as best as I can, you'll see from the comments that we've had obviously a lot of stakeholder engagement with this, but actually we've not received any adverse comments in relation to the scheme. In terms of the policy background and the principal development, I think the main point that I want to make is that this is a site that is allocated in the UDP for industrial purposes and clearly the surrounding area has that sort of mixed industrial profile. That said however, again as this committee will be aware, the area is one undergoing significant change. We've got obviously the development at the Stanley Dock and the Titanic Hotel nearby and as a consequence of this and other aspirations of that area, the council produced the 10 Streets Strategic Regeneration Framework and that sort of wider land use allocation is now reflected in the draft local plan. So as part of the principal development, your officers have given greater weight to that emerging, emerging policy within the draft local plan and consider greater weight should be given to it. So for those reasons, Chair, the principal development is considered appropriate. In terms of the context, architectural form, massing again, you've got quite a detailed commentary within the report, you've got the images there for you to be able to understand the development and the way it relates to the surrounding area. I think one of the things that again is important to point out is that we have had lengthy discussions with the applicants on the scale of massing and this was slightly higher when it first came to us than the scheme that's before you now. That is because there is, there are some parameters that your officers have put within the 10 Streets Regeneration Framework and we wanted to ensure the consistency with those parameters to ensure that the scale and massing of developments going forward reflected the overall scale and the warehouse typology within that particular part of the city. So we've managed to achieve the, what we think is the right scale. The linking elements that you can see between the three blocks have gone up as a consequence in order for the applicants to get the right numbers within this and to ensure a reasonably commercially viable scheme. But I think if you've got any questions about the overall design, then please ask at the end.
Chair, if I can intervene at this juncture, I appreciate the case officer summarising, however, I'm pleased to now welcome the applicants and their representatives to today's meeting. Again, welcome to colleagues from Taurus. If I could invite my colleague to revert the presentation to its first slide and invite Taurus representatives to take us through and then we'll revert to Mr Hayes. Thank you. And thank you and apologies, we were waiting in the waiting room. Thank you John, I think you've covered a lot of the issues that I was going to pick up earlier in talking through the presentation, but essentially just want to highlight with this first slide, who the applicant is and for those members of the committee that don't know, so Taurus 62 Limited is, or Taurus Group, it's now an amalgamation of housing associations which included Liverpool Mutual Homes. We own and manage around 40,000 homes but focus in our heartlands of Warrington, St Helens and in particular Liverpool and we're one of the region's largest affordable housing providers. And since we're an exempt charity, so the charitable objects of Taurus are about the delivery, delivery of affordable housing opportunities. We have ambitions to develop over 1,000 new affordable homes each year for the next five years, including homes for the elderly, supportive housing, affordable rent and affordable home ownership. But importantly for Taurus, construction is at the end of the story and I think these are extracts from our corporate plan which show our commitment is to community, have a charity, a community charity, Taurus Foundation, which invests in projects alongside our built elements to improve lives through investments in health and wellbeing, education, training opportunities and providing access to employment. Okay, if you could click for the second slide, that would help. Okay, and we do have a track record of delivery. We, whilst, we deliver homes, it's not just about homes, for example Ogden Space on the left hand side is an example of one of our developments where we've restored a grade two listed building and a landmark for the local area on Banbury Road in Everton. We have Nailers Field Drive at the top right, which is an exemplar modular family housing scheme and then the scheme we're just seeking to finish at the moment, which is the approach on Edge Lane, where we've worked in partnership with the council to deliver what is an important piece of the long-term regeneration ambitions that the council has for this road corridor and for the communities of Kensington and Bicton. If we go on to slide 3 please, which leads us on to the proposed development. As I say, John's picked up a lot of the features, but this is a flagship scheme for Taurus. It's a development site at the centre of the 10 Streets Regeneration Framework, adjacent to the Stanley Dock complex and the significant heritage assets of the tobacco warehouse and the Titanic Hotel and immediately next to the Stanley Flight canal locks. It's a residential ed scheme, but it does include commercial spaces in line with council's mixed use policy and support in the council's aspirations for the 10 Streets to become a vibrant, creative and employment area. It will provide 195 affordable homes and they're all proposed as the rent by tenure. And that's homes that will be let at rents at least 20% lower than market rent. That's intended to provide residents opportunity to save a deposit, to be able to purchase the homes or to be able to purchase a share in the homes. And Taurus has secured grant funding in excess of £7 million from Homes England in order to deliver 100% affordable home housing scheme. We've tried to achieve a sustainable mix, we've got a mixture of one, two and three bedroom properties, which is responding to the strategic housing market assessment published by the council. We've got larger duplex units which will be in the upper floors. If you go back to the previous slides, we can perhaps see that. And we've got 10 townhouses fronting the canal. We're aiming to bring activity and natural surveillance to the canal towpath. It's an area that at the moment is quite secluded and it does experience some antisocial behaviour and we're hoping that the mix will provide, will attract families and sharing couples as well as individuals buying for the first time. Okay, if you go back to the fourth slide please. The development site is a difficult one for us, a significant constraint, not least changes in level from left to right or west to east and also from north to south across site, there's about two metres difference between Lightbody Street and the canal towpath. We've also got contaminated land and we've got sensitivities around heritage and ecology. We've also, also got a buried canal dock basin beneath part of the site, which is something we're looking to preserve as an archaeological record as we take the development forward. Those constraints have made it difficult to achieve some of the emerging policies notably. We're at about 95% in terms of the M42 and M43 standard and we've got seven homes achieving the M43 standard and suitable wheelchair use. We're at, the majority of homes will also achieve the nationally described space standards. The remainder do achieve not less than 85% of that standard in line with our grant funding requirements from Homes England. Just to mention, we're in advanced discussions also with Mersey Heat to connect the development with district heating in this location and thereby improve the energy efficiency of the scheme and in time to decarbonise heat and hot water use. Mersey Heat has planning permission for pipework across Great Howard Street, which would connect the development to the wider network. We've also got significant hard and soft landscaping commitments. We've got podium gardens for residents and a small public square, which is on the right of the screen, in front of the railway arches, which will allow spout space for the commercial occupiers off those railway arches. We're providing an accessible cycle and pedestrian route, which runs connecting the Eldonian Village to the east with Great Howard Street to the west and on to Regent Road and the new cycle, psychopath infrastructure there. Okay, if you want to go to the last slide. This is simply intended to capture and convey the high quality of the proposed development in line with the corporate vision, which was on the first slide and the track record of delivery, we're keen to have the opportunity to develop, to deliver high quality affordable housing opportunities in this location. Addressing housing needs, but also to play a small part in delivering the council's regeneration aspirations for the 10 Streets Framework area. We would be benefiting from significant investments made by the council through the North Liverpool Key Corridor project, but we also trust that the proposed development itself can act as a catalyst for positive change in this unique and important part of the city. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for that. Is that Matthew, is it?
Yes it is.
Okay, thanks. I've got councillor Hanson and then if any other members have got any questions, okay, councillor Hanson first.
Just a quick question and I'll come back after John's finished. In terms of how many car parking spaces have we got and how many of them will be serviced for electric cars?
Is that Matthew?
Is that a question for me? Yeah, that's fine. We've got 97 car park spaces, we've got 90 standard and seven accessible, so the seven accessible serve in the, the M43 units, the wheelchair adapted units. Of those we're proposing at 5% are provided with electrical vehicle charging, but we've designed them so that we have flexibility to increase that to 10% should there be demand as that, as that technology grows.
Okay, councillor Caldwell then, councillor Maloney.
Yeah, just a question about Lightbody Street. The corner of Lightbody Street and Great Howard Street, is that where Sans Cafe is currently? Yeah. Just a question about Lightbody Street is effectively used almost as a kind of breakers yard by the business on the opposite side of the road at this site. You literally can't get down there and park a lot of the time. I'm just wondering what the, what the impact is going to be of obviously dislocating all that activity in terms of cars which, I mean, clog 100% of the, you've seen it yourselves, clog 100% of the pavement as well as the road. So I mean, two things, what will happen during the construction and then what will happen during the long term to that activity?
Okay, we have obviously talked to the local businesses, we held a community event at the village hall in the Eldonian Village and they were invited along, but also we've spoken to them face to face, other businesses. There are a number of operators who are, who appear to be operating from the street, let's be honest, rather than the premises location of Lightbody. And we've talked to them, one of them in particular, who has a large number of vehicles on the adopted highway and has also been parking vehicles on our property, is in the process of moving and we've seen probably 60% of those vehicles moved off site. He's moved towards, towards the town end of the 10 Streets Framework area, so he's towards that Oil Street now we understand. So the number of vehicles are reducing and we're working in partnership with Network Rail, who also had issues in terms of those vehicles being parked under the railway arches. I think officers have looked to secure some money through the section 106 agreement, which would allow management of car parking and the traffic regulation orders that are in place on Lightbody Street, but yes, we know, we know it's something that we have to deal with as we take the development forward.
Councillor Maloney?
Thanks Chair. Carrying on from councillor Hanson's questions about the car parking, I noticed that in the report, it says there are a number of, I think it's 10, cycle parking spaces for commercial use, presumably that would be deliveries, but there's none allocated for the main car parking spaces. So my questions around car parking are, will there be assigned car parking spaces? So will there be assigned per residence or will it be on a first come, first served basis? And what are the opportunities for parking outside the actual development site? And I've got a couple of supplementaries on other issues as well. Thanks Chair.
Okay, in terms of management of car parking, I think at this stage, we haven't got a management strategy adopted for the site. No, it's, it's likely that the development will take two years to construct and so it's something that we will look at and towards the end. The intention is that certainly we allocate car park spaces to the M43 units, so as I mentioned, the seven, seven spaces, disabled parking spaces, we would allocate to those houses. The remainder, the intention is that we look at the larger units within the scheme, so the two and three bedroom properties as having first, first choice really for car parking because there's likely to be a greater need for that with the 71 bedroom properties, I suppose being catered for if there are spaces not taken by those, those larger units. But we need to, we need to devise a management approach to car parking and there isn't one per property and we will, we will devise that as we get closer to completion of development. Okay, in terms of wider opportunities, there is a traffic regulation board on Lightbody Street on the south side in front of the development and the properties on the north side of Lightbody Street are commercial properties who use the four courts, who use the areas in front, so there isn't an opportunity for on-street car parking and I think that's correct, so it would be up to residents to pursue their own, their own opportunities for parking if they need it outside of the development and to hire car park spaces. But we do trust with the infrastructure that's gone in, particularly the cycle, cycle route on Regent Road, that we do have end users that recognise this is an accessible location that can get into the city centre quite comfortably. And we're also between two train stations, so it is a sustainable location for us.
Thanks Chair, my supplementary question is more for the officers really.
Given that, I mean, a number of A members have raised issues in relation to highways and car park and we can ask the highways officer to respond to those points in the summary, is that okay?
That's fine Chair, but I do have another question that isn't related to highways. It's about section 106. If my sons are correct, the total amount of section 106 money would be 570,000 or thereabouts. Now this is a sizable sum and I note that the, that that's been waived due to viability issues, however, I think that is a very large sum of money and I am concerned that with the dire financial straits the council was in, can we actually afford that?
Okay, we will ask the officer to respond to that point in the summary. Councillor Key?
Thanks Chair, so I have a couple of questions. So first one is about some additional infrastructure. Is there going to be in need for additional infrastructures in shops and you know, doctor surgeries and schools or will there be pressure on the existing, existing infrastructure? So that's one. Second one, like what are you doing in the design and sort of structure of the buildings to get us to zero carbon as soon as possible? And then yeah, affordable housing, just how affordable are the houses going to be? Do you have, do you have a sort of price range in mind?
Okay, I mean, in terms of infrastructure requirements, we are proposing a mixed use, it is residential ed, but we have got employment uses, commercial uses within the site. There are two new employment spaces, one fronting Great Howard Street and one to the rear adjacent to the canal. But we're also looking to bring the, what are four derelict railway arches back into use at the site and we're proposing, as you're seeing the application title, a flexible use, so using the range of users within the new class, class E, but also B8. We hope that, that one of those will be a shock, we hope that one of them will be a cafe which will serve the residents that are living in the development. In terms of schools and doctor surgeries, it's not something that we have the capacity to provide within the development itself, I suppose we would rely on the advice of the local authority and working with partners who provide those services to advise if there's a need for contribution towards them. They haven't been sought alongside this development, but it is adjacent to Eldonian Village, which is an established residential area and there are a number of services within that location. And picking up sort of sustainability and the environmental efficiency of the site. We've got a few, few constraints already with the railway line being close and we are looking at positive sort of heat exchange within the apartments rather than having naturally vented apartments because, because of that noise constraint. And so it's something where we can quite closely, you know, monitor heat use and, and control the environment within the apartments. As we mentioned in the presentation, we're looking to connect up with Mersey Heat's district heating network, which we understand the aspiration is that that is led by a water source heat pump and will therefore be very low carbon. So in terms of the heat and the hot water provision to the site, it would be decarbonised as it connects to that, that heat network, which we feel is a very positive step and does go well beyond what, what would be achieved under normal building regulations over time. And apologies, I've forgotten, third question, third question was affordable housing. So we do address the definition in the MPPF and as I mentioned in the presentation, we have secured Homes England grant funding. It is, it is genuinely affordable housing, it is proposed entirely as of the rent by tenure, which is rented at 20% below with the prevailing market rent and we have to demonstrate to Homes England that is the case. That provides opportunities for residents to save a deposit, either to purchase the homes outright at the five year mark or to begin incrementally purchasing, so take a share in the apartments over time. So it's a very flexible tenure, which can either remain at a reduced rental or can allow somebody to purchase into a property for the first time really, or if they're returning to the housing ladder, having not been on it.
Okay, councillor Prince, I could have just asked Matthew to speak into the microphone because it's difficult to hear everything from down here. Okay, councillor Prince.
Okay, my one is completely different. The Stanley Dock Lock Complex is an absolutely hidden gem, which I discovered myself first time last year. Canal tourism is also a growth area. You mentioned in your report that you looked at the idea of reinstating that former dock basin, but you ruled it out because of the cost of reinstating any of it. But then in your, in your presentation, you mentioned it very briefly and you said you were still looking at that. I think it would be a really good idea, obviously if you could at least reinstate some of the old dock basin that I think was closed in 1938 to bring that back to its normal original state. So what is the present situation please on that?
Thank you. Yes, we did, a written look at whether we might be able to reinstate at least part of the former dock basin as a, as a heritage feature and to sort of explain the history of the site. The site is contaminated, I think the former dock basin has been filled, it's filled with made ground, we've done a phase one and phase two contamination investigation, we've taken bore holes through the existing buildings to find out what's beneath there and it does include contaminants, we've got asbestos fibers throughout. So the cost of exporting that material is prohibitive. It's, it's hundreds of thousands and we suspect it's beyond a billion pounds in terms of, you know, the investment that would be required to, to show and reveal that historic feature. What we're looking to do with the development is essentially bridge it. So we were, the structure would include piled foundations, which would bridge the former dock basin. As we, as we go through the development, we will expose it and record it, so we've got an archaeological watching brief and essentially leave it in situ. We are looking, at the moment, the, the end of the dock basin is simply filled with concrete ramp, which is quite unsightly and takes away from the Jesse Hartley granite, which is the feature of the dock basins and the Stanley Flight itself. We are looking to restore the end of that inlet really with a new granite facing so that we match. so that we match up with the remainder of the dock structure. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think my colleague is saying if you read paragraph 3.8 in the report, picks up what we're looking to achieve there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No other questions from members? I'd just like to ask, in the report, it talks about townhouses in relation to them upside down. Could you just clarify what that means, upside down?
Essentially, what it means is that the living accommodation is not on the ground floor. So we're trying to achieve natural surveillance and activity on the canal frontage. But we have a very narrow site and we're also looking to achieve enough car parking. So the townhouses which front the canal will have an entrance, a toilet and a study, stroke third bedroom on the ground floor. But then you would go up the stairs to the living accommodation, which would be on the first floor and would then spill out into the podium gardens, the landscaped part of our site. So they're upside down. Okay.
Thanks for that explanation. Can I bring in our case officer and then highways, if they'd like to respond to the points that have been raised? John?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. So very quickly, Chair, I'll carry on from where I was. And so we've got, I think, to sort of heritage considerations. Obviously, you've heard now the relationship with the nearby buildings and also the relationship with the canal basin and so on. And I think references already been made to how that will be addressed at paragraph 3.8. Suffice to say, I think your officer's conclusion is this will not have a significant harmful effect on any heritage assets. And clearly, there are very significant regeneration benefits arising from the development. There is also a section, again, on archaeology and when I concluded our reports, an additional condition which will pick up that issue as well. Obviously, the applicants spoke a little bit about affordable housing and again, that's set out in the report. It's the National Planning Policy Framework's definition of affordable, so it's 80% of market rate. And then obviously, there's a section then about residential amenity, inclusive access and so on. And again, the applicant, I think, has covered a lot of that in their presentation. Just some final issues, Chair, around ecology and so on. This application being obviously referred to our consultants at Mias and they put forward a number of conditions and suggestions which have been looked at and incorporated where appropriate with the conditions. Parking and access is a whole section and I won't go on in any great detail on that because I suspect my colleague will be asking questions about that in a moment. And then just finally picking up on the issue of section 106 contribution to try and pick up councillor Maloney's question. Yes, there would normally be a requirement for section 106. In this particular case, the applicants have submitted a detailed viability appraisal. That's being looked at by our independent consultants and the conclusion reached is that there is no viability within the development if we were to ask for that contribution. I think it's also telling, and as you've heard from the applicant, that there is some £6 million or more additional funding to support this development. So clearly, that in itself suggests that this is a scheme that requires public sector funding in order to make it viable. So it doesn't seem appropriate in those circumstances to then take a slice of that for the council. I would also add, actually, that the section 106 is largely around, the major chunk of that is largely around public realm works. Actually, this scheme delivers an awful lot in terms of public realm, particularly in the improvements around the canal and the connectivity, again, you've heard in the presentation. So I just wanted to emphasise that because it's perhaps lost in terms of the report and the sort of wider narrative around section 106. There is a contribution towards parking of £25,000, however. And then lastly, Chair, just to report some additional conditions. So condition two, in relation to the approved plans, have been updated. I won't go through them. Obviously, there's a long list. Condition 16 is a duplicate. It's already on the papers, so that condition can be removed. And then we're suggesting an additional condition in relation to including an archaeological watching brief to ensure that no development takes place until the applicant has submitted a written scheme of investigation for archaeological work. And hopefully, that will pick up the concerns raised by councillor Prince. And then a further condition that notwithstanding the energy statement that's been provided, the final approach to securing renewable and decentralised energy shall be submitted and confirmed by the local planning authority. So with those additional conditions, Chair, and the section 106, happy to recommend approval.
Thanks, John. Do any members have any questions, Sir John? Non, we'll let us sit the highways and then we'll bring Andy Dingwall in in a moment. You've got a question for both? All right, councillor Hanson then?
I mean, first and foremost, I think I'd like to comment that Torus has demonstrated where other developers should proceed when it's talking about development. They've done an excellent consultation with residents. It is actually the Athel village that's impacted, not the Aldonia village, but they've done these presentations in the Aldonia village. And again, I think it's important for the committee to be aware, not aware, that Torus is an important partner within North Liverpool. So in broad brushstrokes, you know, I'm very supportive of what they're trying to do to bring new life into what is in essence a derelict part of Kirkdale and hopefully just a start of regeneration of that part of Kirkdale. So but the 106, you know, I can understand the argument. I don't disagree with the argument, whatever. But councillor Prince picked up on before that he'd preceded the Stanley Dock for the first time and that's because of the work done by the cent streets and the refurbishments of Great Howard Street, the drop the wall. So allow people to actually see what is a, it's a heritage site. It's absolutely, of a summer's day, it's absolutely beautiful down there. And you see the kids swimming in the canal and all that kind of stuff. Maybe the police don't like it, but the kids love it. And lots and lots of kids around the lanes are swimming there, they're over 65 years of age. The loss for us as a community of any 106 money, you know, misses our opportunity to do something along that dock and enhance what we have got. Now, there's no seat, for example, there's opportunities to enhance it, to make it more attractive for the people who live in the area. But just as importantly, we get lots of tourists down there and actually, I think the canal source actually dropped the walkway. They've actually dropped that down to make it accessible, disabled accessible and all that kind of stuff. So I'm really conscious that Torus has been given £6 million by whoever, I assume it's Homes England, I don't know. And we're given another half a million pounds, which again, it's about viability and whatever. But haven't they got some responsibility to my community, the community I represent, in terms of what are we going to get out of it? You know, I'm trying to be negative. You know, there's an opportunity with positives within that and I would like that explored. I don't know whether we can do that or we can't do that, but I really, really think that we are losing ourselves as a community. I don't think that's fair on the community, given the support that Torus has been giving in terms of Homes England and what we're doing for them. So I'm looking for help and support from yourselves. And I'd also like to say, before I finish on this point, thanks to the officers for the work that they have done with Torus because they're no right beyond us, particularly Vicky, have some concerns and you work the way both yourselves and so on. So I'd like to thank you for that, for the work and the time and the effort that you put into that.
Can I respond to that particular point, John?
I'll do my best. Obviously, in relation to section 106, there are always going to be challenges around getting section 106 with sites such as this. And I think the applicants already raised some points about the complexity around things like contamination and the fill within the basement area. And those are in a language that developers use abnormals, that they're significantly more expensive than might otherwise be expected on a less contaminated site. And all of these things factor into the overall viability of the development. And clearly, what we're delivering here is a, by the definitions of the National Planning Policy Framework, an entirely 100% affordable scheme. So straight away, this isn't a sort of market-led scheme where there's a sort of significant profit element. It's 100% affordable plus the abnormals. I think in relation to the sort of loss that the community, the comments you made councillor Hanson about the loss of the community of that sort of additional funding, I think that's why I tried to emphasise, as I did at the end, that actually, some of the work that is being done around the sort of wider public realm is actually really, really positive. And I don't know whether the architects want to sort of pick up on that or whether you'd allow them to pick up on that. But actually, there are some really good sort of public realm work that is associated with this scheme that is arguable, could offset that section 106 in its own right. I mean, they hadn't done that. They've done a straight viability assessment. But I think, you know, the wider public realm works that are being proposed there are important. I'm part of the sort of consideration and perhaps sort of pick up on what councillor Hanson's raised. But I think the straight answer is we've got a process where we consider viability. It goes to an independent consultant. That's what we've done here. It's been looked at and the independent consultant has come back very clearly that this is not a scheme where we can insist on section 106, unfortunately.
Okay, thanks, John.
So I accept everything you're saying about the complexities and difficulties on that site. I know the site, I know the site intimately, so I know the difficulties. And the public realm work will be done within the site. And what I'm saying is we're missing an opportunity to enhance the area where the people live in, where the residents in Kirkdale. Now, you may be absolutely right in saying of the Howey Mart, the workhouse and that kind of stuff. And alls I'm asking is that can somebody go back and with Torus seriously, sit down and discuss how they can find some money from that scheme in relation to enhancing the canal part of the Liverpool canal? Because it's important to me, it's important to people I represent. But more importantly than that, it enhances the area and does something more for North Liverpool. So that's all I'm asking there, where the Torus can concede and go into negotiating with yourselves to try and find a way to give us some money to do that part of the project, because that's what we're about.
Okay, thanks councillor Hanson. I don't know whether the applicants got anything they'd like to add in relation to, you know, this application in terms of the public realm and what Torus can do in order to maybe address some of the issues that councillor Hanson has raised.
I think John summed up a lot of the rationale really in his sort too. We have looked at alternative sources of funding. We applied for the Brownfield Land Regeneration Fund at the city region level and unfortunately, this scheme was not chosen by the city region. So we are really limited in the public sector funding that we can bring to the scheme. It is one that doesn't perform well, you know, it's not in line with other affordable housing projects that we've brought forward. It is one that will leave us with a significant shortfall. And for every scheme that we have that delivers that shortfall, we are able to invest in less affordable homes, which is our terrible object. So we have to balance carefully how much we can have this as a loss leader. It is a loss leader for us and it's a development scheme that is very difficult to bring forward, but it's a flagship one for us. And we have purchased the site, so we own the land and we want to deliver regeneration aspirations there. And I think John's correct, we've tried to include within the scheme itself significant commitments to public realm. We have the square in front of the railway archers, which we hope will be, our public square will be an opportunity for people to meet and for the, you know, community interactions. But we also have the footpath, which is difficult to achieve alongside the heritage assets of, there's a sandstone wall along the side of the canal basin. And also, we have the change of levels between Great Howard Street and the railway archers, which we have to deal with and really build up to allow that footway to be accessible for pedestrians and for cyclists. For residents themselves, you know, there is immunity space provided on top of the car park podium. So we have podium gardens, which hopefully means that the residents themselves have some immunity space and that it's valuable. We're also, I think, at the entrance of the site from Great Howard Street, we have a landscaped area with tree planting. So I think some of the 106 contributions would be towards, or the majority of them would be towards open space and tree planting as well as public art. We hope what we're bringing forward achieves some of those goals, but we recognise that it's one where normally there would be a significant contribution which we can't viably achieve with a scheme.
Councillor Maloney, did you have a question to highways?
No, that was answered. Thank you, Chair.
Members have any questions? The highways? Councillor Hanson?
Good morning, Andy. How are you? I see we've got 97 car park spaces and 196 apartments, so we get less than 50%. You and I have spent a lot of times on Lightbody Street, probably spent more time there than I have with the wife in relation to car park and issue car parking problems. And it's come up as a cannot do anymore. Our hands are tied. We have problems with the business at the top of the road because of traffic congestion and that kind of stuff. And also, right at the onset, if my memory is right, conversations were taking place between the Liverpool City Council and Torus in relation to the multi-story car park we've proposed to build on Great Howard Street. And conversations were taking place in relation to how they would lease places out to that apartment block. As people might know, the multi-story car park was primarily designed for the Drewsland terminal that we're supposed to be building for parking the cars. But a discussion was going on. So obviously, people recognised at that point, there was real issue with car parking. And also, and highways will be aware, that lots around that area have got parking restrictions now with permits for all the businesses and that kind of stuff. It's not already done, it's in the process of being done. So again, this black magic of highways, you know, saying, well, you've got that, but car parking is not an issue and it's going to be a major issue down there. Once all those businesses get the permits, it's all sorts of whatever. Where are those residents going to park the cars?
Thanks for that, councillor Hanson. Andy, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Andy Dingwall, highways development control team leader. I'll try and summarise all of the highways issues in this response rather than just concentrating on that particular question. But, you know, we worked closely at the outset with Torus on the trying to establish the right level of car parking for this development. And, you know, councillor Hanson's right, there was some discussion early on about the potential use of some of the spaces within the, at the time, proposed multi-story car park, which wasn't too far away. But what we explained to Torus is that that could not be relied upon to be delivered and it couldn't be relied upon in terms of securing those spaces in spite of the discussions that were happening, you know, outside of the planning process. So we explained to Torus that they needed to be self-sufficient in terms of car parking. They needed to go through a process where they were able to identify what the likely demand for car parking was, given the location of the development, given the tenure of the development, i.e. being affordable housing, and to justify the level of car parking provision that needed to be made in connection with this development. And they went through that process. They effectively concluded that a car parking ratio of about 50% was acceptable, would meet the demands from this development. And we agreed with that. We agreed that a 50% provision of car parking for this development in this location, given the tenure, is appropriate. So we've got no issues with that. You will have heard earlier that there'll be seven accessible bays out of the 97. And there will be some EV charging points, minimum 5%, potentially increasing in future as demand increases for that. The other points to make would be, I think, picking up on councillor Maloney's comment earlier about how the car parking will be managed. There is actually a planning condition that will be attached to any decision which will require the applicant to submit a car parking management plan for our approval. So we'll get to see the detail of that, how those spaces are to be allocated to individuals who work in the businesses or residents. And it might be the case that some of those car parking spaces could be used in the daytime by the businesses but in the evening, overnight by the residents and that would make more efficient use of that. In terms of the off-site highway works, there's some improvements to the footways and to... In terms of the off-site highway works, there's some improvements to the footways and to pedestrian provisions. But also there's a proposal to introduce a traffic regulation or that right away along the south side of Light Body Street, including the turn head at the end, to prevent any car parking taking place 24 hours a day along that side. And councillor Hanson mentioned the, I suppose, the other businesses, the other users of units along Light Body Street and the ongoing issues associated with the operation of those units. It's something that we're aware of in highways. It's something that, I suppose, goes beyond the scope of what highways are responsible for. And I do know that colleagues in the traffic management team were looking to arrange a meeting some months ago with different agencies to address the issues of Light Body Street. And whilst it's not something that, you know, I've got control of, I'll take that back and speak to colleagues and try and try to get that meeting convened. So hopefully some of those issues that councillor Hanson is well aware of can be addressed or improved. Thanks Chair.
Okay, thanks for that Andy. Obviously, I mean, this is councillor Maloney.
Yes, Chair, relating to what Andy was saying. I'd have to say, and I've said it before, that 5% of electric vehicle charging positions is totally inadequate. And I think the city plan is failing massively in that regard. I was pleased when you said, Andy, that there's a potential to increase that number. But there's three major issues with that. First of all, how many, basically it's about the capacity of the electricity installation to the development. So you need to be able to draw enough current for the relevant number of charging points. Secondly, if it's going to be developed in as expandable in the future, you need the ducting to be there for the cable to go in, because obviously that's going to increase the cost if you're doing it afterwards. Secondly, you've got to consider, do you put the cable in now or do you put the cable in later? That's a technical question I can't answer. Clearly, the major expenditure is actually on the charging point itself. And that can be added retrospectively, but it massively increases the costs if those preliminary measures aren't taken into account now. So I'm just asking, and it might be a question for the developer or between you and the developer, whether any preparations have been put down in terms of actual numbers and in terms of the cheap infrastructure at this stage. And by that, I'm meaning that the ducting to the parking position.
Thanks Chair. Just responding to that, you're right, the electricity supply is crucial. There's got to be the capacity and the supply in order to install those points. Also, the only point I was really going to make in response to that is that the local plan says the 5% needs to be accessible by EVs. In terms of the technicalities, that's probably a question that's best answered by the applicants in terms of whether they're putting the duct in now, the cabling in now, and what provision they've got for the future retrofitting of those additional units out of them. And so I can't answer that, I'm afraid. It might be one for the applicant to respond to. Thanks.
And just another question to Andy or the other?
It's just a point really Chair, that the actual local plan hasn't been formally adopted yet. So really, we shouldn't be bound by something that hasn't been formally adopted.
Well, there's a long way down the road for it to be adopted, aren't we, you know? And early next year, hopefully, it will be adopted. Could I just ask the applicants in relation to what's been asked by councillor Maloney in relation to the infrastructure of the, you know, the electric charging points?
Yes, we have designed to allow additional spaces in future. So we've asked our M&amp;E consultant to basically design the infrastructure within the development to achieve at least 10%. We have got two new substations which form part of the building. In addition to, there is an existing substation immediately in front of the railway archer. So the electricity infrastructure is there. There are obviously a number of factors in that around electricity usage, around committing to district heating and how that affects the energy call of the building. But yes, we're designing so that the infrastructure is there to increase up to 10%, so beyond the 5%. I think the nature of tours is not in our interest to simply sell off units and to walk away from the development. We tend to retain the building and retain the majority of the apartments and homes within it for the long term. So it's something that we will need to manage the situation in our own interests, never mind in terms of an emerging policy within the local plan, so that we can ensure that we cater for our residents there. And we're looking at the issue across our housing stock and monitoring how the uptake of electrical vehicle charging is going, so that we can respond to that and be proactive.
Well, I can't say any more hands going up, but I mean, obviously it's been really interesting this morning to listen to some of the issues and the points raised by members. But I'd like to thank the applicants, you know, for the presentation. I think it's really been welcome. And, you know, answering the questions that have been raised. Notwithstanding some of the concerns that some members have got, I believe this is like a derelict vacant site and this application would enhance the area. I think it's a welcome investment into North Liverpool. I think as councillor Hanson said, maybe it's a start of regeneration. I think it's welcome. So therefore, for all those points, I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved. Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair. We have a valid recommendation from the Chair to approve subject to the additional conditions, details of which we published in a minute for this meeting. Do you remember which to move any amendments before I conduct the vote on this resolution? No? In which case Chair, your vote please. Four. Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Cardwell?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Matt?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Prince?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney?
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Lake?
Four.
Thank you. And councillor Key?
Four.
Thank you. That concludes the voting on this application and the outcome is the application is approved subject to the legal agreements and conditions as stated. Thank you colleague. Proceed to our next item of business.
Thanks Mike. Item six is land adjacent to the Keel, King's Parade, Hart Tag Wharf, Queen's Dock. Stuart McCrone, is he here? Would you like to take us through this presentation please?
Yes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present this morning. This application is a resubmission of a previously consented scheme that expired at the beginning of 2020. And it forms the second phase of the development that's now known as the Keel. Phase one was the conversion of the former HMRC headquarters down in Queen's Dock that was completed back in 2015. The phase one of the scheme has traded well since completion in 2015 and has remained 95% and above in terms of occupancy, which has given us and our JV Funding Popcorns bearings real estate the confidence to push forward with development of the second phase. The scheme in general comprises of two eight-storey brick-built blocks separated by the Queen's Graving Dock itself. The scheme totals 257 units, which comprises a mix of one and two-bed apartments, approximately 81% one-bed and 19% two-bed. To put the unit mix in context, the scheme as a whole, including phase one, will operate as one built-to-rent managed scheme. Phase one includes a high proportion of three-bed family units that are fully occupied as we speak. The design recognises the significance of the Queen's and King's Dock area and utilises a scale massing and facade treatment in brickwork that's similar to the typology of the historic warehouses within that part of South Liverpool. The overall height of the scheme is similar to that of the phase one Keel building and recognises the height datum that exists in King's Dock, maintaining the views of the cathedral and recognising the, and I've put this in inverted commas, the former World Heritage Site. Obviously, the scheme, when originally designed, sat within the World Heritage Zone, Buffer Zone. The scheme provides 74 parking spaces, which is approximately 29%, of which 12 of those will be for disabled use. Again, putting that in context, the phase one scheme includes north of 100%. Overall terms for this application, all of the spaces will however be deducted for future proofing. I'm conscious that that, without question, is the direction of travel in terms of vehicle use in the future. The scheme includes 96 secure cycle spacing spaces, which reflects 37%. Data for that has been used in terms of the cycling provision that we've experienced on phase one. In terms of NDSS compliance, we are compliant with the lower occupancy levels of the NDSS. We are borderline in terms of NDS compliance in full. But again, to put that in context, the NDSS requirements reflect an apartment layout that has a more traditional entrance lobby and corridor space. Our scheme design reflects an open-plan apartment layout, which is more efficient, which enables us to make the apartment sizes slightly smaller and in turn makes the apartments more affordable in terms of the rental market. I've got my colleague here, Jonathan Farrell from Brock Carmichael Architects, who can comment in more detail in terms of the specific architectural response to the World Heritage Site buffer zone. And I'll pass over to Jonathan.
Thank you Stuart. And if we could skip to the next slide please, thank you. You can see here the north and south buildings to the right-hand side of the screen. And you can see the linear, two linear masses against the existing landmark building of the Keel to the left. And once within the site, the only way to cross falls out is by the Lincoln Bridge, which is the small bridge depicted in white during the north and south buildings there. So there are two linear blocks, a simple massing. Again, as Stuart previously mentioned, akin to the warehouse technologies, found throughout the blocks. If we could skip to the next slide please. Sorry David, one moment please. Yes. So the brick warehouses. Excuse me. Brick warehouses associated with the 18th century phase of dock building are highly distinctive in style and monumental in scale. The Keel building adjacent to the site is a landmark building and is also monumental in scale. Scale of these buildings is appropriate to their context and to the massive scale of the dock basins. The scale and massive proposed buildings attempt to adopt a similar typology to the historic warehouse buildings. And the proposed scale is in keeping with the Keel and other warehouse buildings within the World Heritage Site buffer zone. Therefore, we believe the proposed buildings are considered to be of an appropriate scale that is suited to the context. And in terms of height, the proposed development is eight stories high. This is at the lower end of what the World Heritage Site SVD classifies as mid-rise buildings. The proposed development is similar in height to the overall height of the Keel building adjacent and is generally in accordance with the height datum for the King's Dock waterfront area. Development of this height serves to complement the existing architectural interest and townscape and strengthens the interplay of vertical and horizontal axes characteristic of the waterfront. The detailed elevation design brings together characteristics of the port buildings, such as the vertical bay reminiscent of warehouse space and combines it with elements found on some of the city buildings, such as, some other city buildings, such as oriel windows. This approach is intended to strike a sensitive balance between solidarity, celibity, excuse me, that is needed in respect, to respect the historic contracts, context and the openness that is desirable for residential use and to exploit the water side views. The resulting proposals are of high architectural design quality and the design approach is contemporary, but the concept is grounded and informed by a clear understanding of the history and significance of the dockland context and its distinctive character. The designers sought to include elements of distinctiveness, such as oriel windows, that will provide with a particular sense of the little character. The oriel windows are important features that take advantage of the opportunity for views of the city and some of its important landmarks as well as views of the river. Next slide please. Thank you. In terms of materiality, brickwork is proposed as the main facing material for the buildings to reflect the consistency of its use in the construction of the historic warehouse buildings and for its robustness and good weathering characteristics. And to clarify, this will be a solid brickwork construction, not brick steps. Doors and windows proposed to be coloured coated metal frames with glazing and with required metal span for panels. The ground floor level itself is raised and the openings at ground and first floor levels are recessed to emphasise the base of the building, which is a characteristic of the historic warehouse buildings. The elevation maintains strong vertical emphasis in the arrangement of window openings. With the two highest floors set back, containing recessed balconies that accentuate the top of the building and provide depth and modelling to the facade. In terms of landscaping, the headline concept is to sit the two buildings within a singular ground plane with a very simple robust materiality. The strong east-west orientation centered, the proposed build on massing has a strong east-west orientation centered around the existing graving dock and is approximately symmetrical and mirrored across the dock. This creates a very strong series of spaces that responds to the proposed build form. At various times through the day and throughout the year, there will be areas that are more sheltered and more exposed, or more exposed to both sunlight and wind. The landscape design attempts to exploit these contrasts to give a wide range of facilities and types of space from sheltered and introspective to exposed and outward looking viewing platforms. In terms of immunity facilities, the landscape design reconciles the need for various specific servicing, need for various specific servicing and functional requirements, such as car parking, cycling and refuse storage, with the need to provide external immunity for the 257 apartments, including communal green spaces, semi-private terraces and car parking, as Stuart's previously mentioned, with 74 proposed spaces and 12 of these being extra worth bays accessible by wheelchair users. In terms of connectivity, the position of the site is well connected to the Pierhead and sits close to the Bull City Centre and is served by bus. The waterfront walkway is used extensively by joggers, dog walkers, cyclists and cyclists and for fishing. The walkway gives direct access to five-mile-long network of opening spaces located to Otter Pool in the south and the Pierhead in the north.
We can't really hear you now, hear you not saying, and you're coming to the end of your presentation because we know we've got five minutes and I think you've completed that. But if you could just speak into the microphone and a bit louder.
Sorry, it's Leo, no, but apologies, yeah. And if you just go to the, oh, I can hear myself now, if you can go to the final slide please, yeah. And so within the slides, you can see, between the Keel building on the left, you can see the previously approved in 2019, there's a gold sheared building, which is the residence pavilion, which will offer immunity to the residents, including a gym and some postal spaces and shared working spaces. And to the foreground of that, you can see the six townhouses that have been proposed. But then to the right-hand side, the two large linear blocks that we're discussing today. You can also see a relationship to the Anglican and to the Keel. And we believe it'd be a positive contribution. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the presentation. Have members got any questions I'd like to ask at this stage? councillor Maloney?
Yeah, thanks Chair. It was mentioned that the parking situation would be fluid in regards to the parking already provided in phase one of the developments. I'd just like to know what the experience is or has been of the phase one development in terms of the parking available there and what percentage of it is used or whatever other metrics you have available for it. And the second question is in terms of secure cycle parking, what's, what makes it secure? Is it just like the Sheffield stands that people can bolt to? Or is it something that will, like some kind of cage type structure? And the third one of our nature is, are there any photovoltaic solar power generation facilities on the roof? I appreciate it's a flat roof and that would have given a facility there, I would have thought, thanks Chair.
Okay, would you like to respond?
Thank you. In terms of the secure cycle provision, it's a dedicated room that has far back access control to it. It has CCTV provision in terms of wider security and the cycle racks themselves are a two-tiered rack system that enables you to lock your bike to the system itself. In terms of parking on phase one, whilst we're not actively involved in the day-to-day management of that, I'm informed by colleagues, current parking provision there ranges between 70 and 80%. It's a slightly unusual parking provision down there, given that it was the conversion and refurbishment of the former HMRC building. So the proportion of parking was reasonably high. That's managed on licenses separate to the AST leases for the residents down there. So we have control over how many spaces individuals have. Some people, as I'm informed, have multiple cars. That will be more directly controlled as the second phase comes online, just so that there's a better balance of parking provision across the two. In terms of the PV provision on the roof, between ourselves and bearings real estate as our JV partners, we are very much on that journey towards net zero carbon. We appoint and retain a low-carbon consultant on all of our projects. We're currently in discussions about applying water source heat pump technologies to phase one. And phase one has roof PV installed. In terms of ensuring compliance with either current partel or future partel, there will be PV across the roofs on both of the blocks of this proposal.
Thank you councillor Cargill.
Yeah, I think there's a lot to commend this, but there's also a lot of concerns about this particular development that I've got. We talk about car parking, I walk past this site almost daily and I can say phase one was a disaster if you were a pedestrian. And it took a long, long time, as in years, to sort those issues out, pavement, parking. And to this day, a lot of the paving that was damaged during that period has still not been repaired. So I'd be worried about 74 parking spaces for 257 units. And I appreciate everything about the fluidity between the two, but there are still pavement parking issues around there. The other thing is that at the moment, there are a lot of cormorants in and they hang around at that end of the graving dock. And obviously this will displace them and I'm just wondering if there's been any thought as to what happens to those birds, where they will go. Now, I'm no ornithologist, I don't know if they nest there, but they're definitely there during the day. I have seen things like little floating islands put into situations like that so the birds can, if you like, sit there during the day or, you know, fish from there or do whatever they're doing. And then again, I would raise very serious issues around the section 106 money, which if I'm reading this correctly, has again been waived.
Okay, would you like to respond to those points?
Yes, I certainly will. Yes, well, I think we're, it's difficult to ignore the issues that we had in terms of the parking provision down on the site. Certainly during our construction progress, 2014 through to 2015, we've gone through two different management companies in an attempt to try and resolve the parking issues that were down there. I was personally based on site during the original development. And it's probably worth putting it in context, I think our contractors were all based on our site because we had a lot of site area to allocate. But the convention centre was under construction at the time and I think that was probably a large contributing factor to that. In terms of the parking provision there, the travel plan takes recognition of the multi-story car park that's immediately adjacent to King's Dock. So I think in overall terms, putting parking in context, there are a lot of reasons not to park on the pavements down there. But I do acknowledge that it probably does need more work. I don't think it's necessarily solely down to us and the operators, but working with King's Dock waterfront and the other key stakeholders to find a better solution. In terms of the cormorants, yes, I have firsthand experience of those down there. I don't have an answer, I'm not an ornithologist either. I don't know what the solution is, but we're more than happy to take that away and work with our ecologists and any relevant specialists to find an appropriate solution that recognizes that. And in terms of the section 106, there is an agreed section 106 contribution. We spent probably the better part of nine months this year in discussions with the planning officer and the external viability consultant. The scheme itself at the moment is borderline viable. We're facing fairly drastic increases in construction pricing at the moment, which is cause for major concern. I think if this site wasn't currently under our ownership, the scheme just wouldn't be viable and we wouldn't be able to bring it forward. The only reason we can bring it forward is the site is under our control. But there is a, there is an agreed section 106 contribution of £149,000. And we're in negotiations to get the 106 agreement drafted for next week.
Okay, thank you for that. Did any other members have any questions to the applicants? If not, I'll be the case officer and please just summarise this.
Thanks Chair, Fergal McFone, team leader for city centre development management purposes. Could you go back to the initial slide that kind of gives an overlay of the site please? So what you've got, the site is allocated as mixed use in the development plan and the local plan. You've got existing the Keel historic, the former HMRC building which is five storey comprising 240 units. This proposal is an eight storey building with 257 residential units in two separate buildings, the kind of north and the south building. That seeks to replicate a kind of historic warehouse type typology, maximum eight stories in height. There's a very detailed report in front of you, there's been a number of objections to the application, both from local residents, from Ward Council, also from Liverpool ACC and both Meas and Canals and River Trust have also raised concerns. The concerns of local residents largely relate to the scale of design of the building, the impact on local traffic movements, construction noise and loss of light to existing Keel residents. And ACC Liverpool have raised concerns relating to kind of traffic movements in and around the site. Canal and River Trust have raised, not objections, but flag issues relating to the structural integrity of the dock wall, landscape design, tree planting and contamination and surface water drainage. Now, all the concerns that ACC Liverpool and Canal and River Trust have raised are attached as conditions in relation to kind of surface water drainage in relation to construction management plan. So all those issues have been addressed. You've got a very detailed report in front of you which goes through a development forensically in terms of the principle of residential development in the site, the scale, the kind of heritage impacts, the impact or in this case the lack of any impact it has on the kind of historic dock environment and heritage assets in relation to parking, highway safety, residential and environmental amenity. The two blocks are located approximately 100 metres apart and the nearest block, particularly the north building, is located some 40 metres away from the nearest residential apartments within the existing Keel. So there's been a sunlight and daylight analysis submitted with the application. And whilst the findings say there is a degree of loss of light to existing residents, that's within acceptable thresholds. And there wouldn't be sufficient reason for the scheme to be refused on that basis. What I'll do, I'll deal with the issues kind of councillor Cargill has raised and also councillor Mombi has and councillor Dilek have raised concerns in reelections to section 106 payments. And there's a table note in front of you with additional comments from councillor Mombi. In relation to the issue that councillor Cargill raised relating to pavement parking, this is, all the highways here are privately managed. They're not adopted highways for LCC, managed by LCC, it's a private management company. And I do know that kind of parking breaches are rigorously enforced. So if you park kind of legally on the pavement, you should get ticketed. As part of the recommendation, there will be, the applicants will have to provide a construction management plan which will detail where contractors, construction vehicle traffic part during the construction of the development and that is something we will share with colleagues in highways before we kind of sign off on that pre-commendment condition. Condition 24 relates to requirement to protect breeding birds. The developers will have to put a scheme of mitigation in place. In terms of section 106 payments, as the applicants originally said in the presentation, this development required payments of some £767,000 in respect of the non-provision of kind of open space on site. The applicants originally proposed net nil contribution and there's been long and drawn out meetings between the LPA, our independent viability consultant and the applicants. And now we're in a position where we think this scheme can afford a contribution of £149,000, which is probably 20, 20-ish percent of what was normally required. Councillor Mombi has raised a number of concerns in relation to this. He's asked for the viability appraisals, i.e. the dialogue between ourselves and the developer to be made public. All those documents are online, anyone can access them. So we're not hiding anything, we're sharing everything in public. And in terms of councillor Mombi and councillor Cargill possibly has also suggested that the developer could accept a less profit from the site. The planning practice guidance on viability sets out what is deemed to be an appropriate investment on return for developers. And the council, the approach of the council is in line with the guidance contained there. As I said, there's a detailed report in front of you, so I don't know if any members or Chair, if you've got any further questions, this kind of specifics in relation to the application, but we're satisfied it's an appropriate form of development. The height of the building is appropriate for the location, the design of the building is also appropriate and it's a scheme that's supported by your officers.
Well, thanks Fergal, any members have any questions or comment? No? Well, therefore, I mean, obviously there's a comprehensive proposal in front of us. And I think it's right to say that this, a previous similar scheme has already been approved, doesn't it, but it's elapsed. So therefore, I mean, obviously I think this scheme is complementary to the area, so I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved.
Chair, could I propose an amendment please?
Well, let me move my recommendation first. Could I just repeat that, I'm going to move that the recommendation be approved. That agree.
Thank you Chair, I can invite councillor Maloney to speak to move his amendments.
Thanks Chair, my amendment is that the full section 106 monies be collected for this scheme. What's proposed would only actually collect 19.4%, £149,767,000 approximately. And if we look, this is the second item today. And if we tot up the section 106 monies that have been deferred, it's £1.2 million giveaway by the city council. Christmas has come early for developers, this is a prestige development on the riverfront. It's not, it's not going to make a lot, it's, I would contend going to make a healthy profit, especially with rising house prices. I don't think it's appropriate that the city should effectively subsidise a commercial development. So that's my rationale for my amendment, thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Maloney, just to confirm for person of clarity, the effect of your amendment will be to reject the justification provided in the independent viability assessment, which has been independently assessed on that basis. Is that amendment therefore seconded before we move to a vote?
Oh, seconded Chair.
Councillor Lakey also wanted to get the same time, so I will put two seconds down for both of your benefits, thank you. I'll now move to conduct the votes on the amendment, the effect of which if agreed will be to approve the recommendation but subject to requiring full payment of the section 106 monies, which is in contradiction to the officer's recommendation. Councillor Hanson, I am moving to the vote now, so are you wishing to comment on this particular amendment? If so, can you keep it brief if you would do please, thank you.
I'm asking for guidance, my understanding is that the, before any decision is made on elements like this, this goes out with independent assessors. Yeah, we know. My understanding is that this type of decision is based on independent advice gained by independent assessors. And for us as a committee to reject that professional advice would put us acting in some legal uncertainty. So for me, I will be speaking, I'll be voting against the amendment Chair. And can I make, can I just ask the clerk to ensure that my comments are recorded within the due minutes?
Thank you councillor Hanson, just for the benefit of the public record, as you recall when I summarised the detail of councillor Maloney's amendment, I specifically referenced this particular point and would concur with the points raised by yourself. As indicated in the debate for this comes and indeed the previous application, you had a length process whereby in the event that there's a case to reduce or waive section 106 contributions in their whole or in part, this goes through an external independent verification process. And again, I will note your comments within the minutes accordingly. All members are voting on this amendment with that very clear understanding, you've had an independent assessment and you're wishing to go contrary to that particular position.
Chair, through the chair, I am just concerned that councillor Maloney is trying to bring politics into what is a planning process. And we've always avoided that, bringing politics into any issues within planning. I think it's deplorable that councillor Maloney can be moving such an amendment chair.
Yes, thank you councillor Hanson. I too endorse what you just said, that you are bringing in politics into this committee. Really, what we are doing here today is following the process that are laid now, not only through planning guidance but by government. You know, and we've had a comprehensive report into the earlier application and to this one is the reason why. You know, that we can't have either section 106 or section 106 in full. So it's deplorable that members of the opposition parties are using the planning system for their own political ends. Absolutely disgraceful. No, you don't.
Can I just ask members to take a step back? Obviously respectful debate and disagreement in terms of particular planning points and interpretations is entirely acceptable. Just to remind all members present in this chamber to show due respect to each other. And you clearly have very opposing positions, but again a reminder to show due respect, notwithstanding substantially differing interpretations as to the impact and weight to be given to the independent assessment. as to the impact and weight to be given to the independent assessments on viability. With that in mind, I will now move to conduct the votes on this particular amendment. So the vote will be, if I ask for in favour, you are indicating you are in favour of applying the amendment and requiring full payment to the section 106 monies. With in mind, Chair, please cast your vote.
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Cargill?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Matt?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Prince?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Lake?
For.
Thank you. And councillor Key?
For.
Thank you. That concludes the voting on this particular amendment. The vote is three members in favour, seven members voting against, and the effect therefore is the amendment falls. And we now revert to a vote on the original motion as moved by the Chair, the effect of which will be to approve the application subject to a legal agreement and the various conditions as stated, but with the appropriate reduction in section 106 payable, reflecting the outcome and recommendation of independent viability assessments in terms of the level of viability of the proposed development. With that in mind, I will now move to take the Chair's vote. Chair, please indicate now.
For.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Cargill?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Matt?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Prince?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Lake?
Against.
And councillor Key?
Abstain.
For the benefit of the two members who voted against and the one member who voted to abstain, please note that your names will be recorded as dissenting expressly in minutes for the benefit of the public record. And just to confirm the outcome of the vote, that is seven members voting in favour, two members voting against, and one member abstaining on this vote. And this concludes the voting on this particular application. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Mike. Can we now move to item seven, which is 14 Alexandra Drive? And I understand we have Graham Truella who's going to address the members of this committee? Graham, are you there?
I am, yes.
Would you like to continue, Graham?
Thank you. My name's Graham Truella and I represent the applicant. This property, the application property, is a former care home. It sits in a prominent location at the junction of Alexandra Drive and Sandringham Drive in Liverpool 17. You can see from the aerial image on the screen that the property suffered extensive fire damage. And part of the proposed development is to reconstruct the upper level of the property, which includes a new roof. The condition of the property at the moment certainly detracts from the general appearance of the Mark Lane conservation area and something cleaning needs to be done. We see this as an opportunity to comprehensively refurbish this property, to convert it to 10 flats, and to give the building a new lease of life. Next slide, please. This is a street level shot of the building. The proposal to convert it to 10 flats will bring the whole building back into effective use. It's a comprehensive approach that deals with the reconstruction, as I said, of the upper floors of the building and also the external areas around the building itself. One benefit is that the external fire escape associated with the former care home use, which you can see to the right hand side of the building, will be removed. And there will be a complete renewal of all external areas, including the repair of the stone boundary wall. Next slide, please. The proposal is to convert the property to 10 self-contained flats. The scheme in front of you shows that we can achieve 10 parking spaces within the site. The circulation space for vehicles, which is shown by the tracking movements on this plan, shows that those 10 vehicles will be able to access the site in four gear and egress the site in four gear as well. So the scheme includes the retention of most trees. There are two trees that are in poor condition that are to be removed, and there is a replacement tree at the road junction. Next slide, please. We intend to work with the fabric of the building, the historic grain of the room layout to create the flats. This provides good standard of accommodation. Only one of the flats is marginally below the national space standard for a two-bed, three-person flat. We don't require the use of the external fire escape. Fire protection is achieved through a fully fire-protected stairwell, together with other fire protection measures, such as smoke and heat detectors and alarm systems. There's a ramp at the front of the building, and that gives a degree of access to people with limited mobility, so that is to be retained. Next slide, please. We believe that the overall and comprehensive refurbishment of the building will provide an opportunity to establish it as an important part of the conservation area. There are a limited number of external alterations, a small number of new doors and windows to accommodate the 10 new apartments, but these don't have a significant impact at all on the appearance of the building or the general appearance of the conservation area. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Bye now.
Thank you, Graham. Do members have any questions for the applicant? Oh, councillor Key?
Thank you. Yes, I have a few questions. So as part of some residents' objections, the issue of noise has been raised. So I'm very familiar with the area because I'm a ward councillor for St Michael's. And I am aware that there are a lot of other developments going on at the same time. So I wanted to know about some ways to mitigate that noise. So that's the first one. Second one is on accessibility. Councillor's accessibility officer suggested if at least the wheelchair ramp may be retained as part of the development. So I wanted to hear your views on that. And next one is on the trees. So it looks like two mature trees that provide really good sort of amenity for residents will be replaced with just one silver birch. I wanted to know why is that and whether there is perhaps room for improvement. And just clarification on page 143, 2.2. It's about cycling parking. I'm unclear whether it will be part of the planning condition or not. So if you could just clarify that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Graham, would you like to respond?
Yes, certainly. In terms of, first of all, accessibility, the ramp is to be retained. We did have a discussion with your planning officer about the merits of retaining that or not. And it was found on balance that there were advantages in retaining the ramp. It's not too obtrusive as a structure at the front of the building. And there are merits in retaining it to give better access for those with mobility problems. So I can confirm that the ramp will be retained. In relation to trees, we did carry out a full agricultural survey, and that recognised that the two trees to be removed were lower quality trees. And again, through discussions with your planning officer, we agreed that one replacement tree at the junction of Sandringham Drive and Alexandra Drive would be an appropriate replacement. There is limited space around the building for other trees of any significant size. Existing trees are being retained, especially along Alexandra Drive. When they're in full leaf, they actually do screen the building. They are quite substantial trees. So the other points were in relation to?
Noise, I think.
Noise. I assume that to be construction noise. And on a scheme of this scale, we would be happy to provide a construction environment management plan to show how noise generating activities at construction stage can be appropriately managed. So I think that's probably the best way of dealing with construction noise.
Okay, thanks, Graham. I can't see any other members putting their hands up. Can I ask Stuart to come in and give us a summary on this application?
Thank you, Chair. You've got a detailed report in front of you and you've had a detailed presentation from the agent. As you've seen from the photographs on the screen, this is a large detached villa in the conservation area, and it's in a poor state of disrepair. The proposal is to convert it into 10 two-bed flats, and such conversions are considered to be acceptable in principle in primarily residential areas. The proposed flats will all benefit from natural light to habitable rooms with access to outside communal areas. The proposal is considered to have a positive effect on the character of the conservation area, given its current dilapidated condition, and is considered that the reuse of the building and associated external works will enhance the character and appearance of the conservation area. As was touched upon by the agent, one of the flats would fall some three and a half square metres below the national space standard requirements. However, this is as a result of having to work with the internal layout of the heritage asset. Given that this deficit is minor and that the wider proposal will bring the heritage asset back into meaningful use, preserving its long-term future and enhancing the conservation area, it's considered that in weighing the planning balance, those benefits outweigh the minor shortfall in the flat size. There'll be 10 off-street parking spaces, which is compliant with the insurer of choice in transport SPD, and the head of highways and transportation raises no objections to the proposal. Given the site-specific nature of the heritage asset with level changes and stepped entrances, it's not considered reasonable to achieve full compliance with the relevant accessible housing policies as part of conversion. This is accepted by the access officer, and you've seen from both, from the presentation and the answer to the councillor's question, that the disabled ramp will be retained at the request of the access officer. In connection with the trees, just to pick up on councillor Key's point, the two trees that were being, are proposed to be removed, have been considered to be of poor quality by the tree officer. And he considers that just the plant of a single tree will allow it to develop it with its full potential rather than cramping and you get poor formal trees. So he's happy that that will be an appropriate response, given the quality of the trees to come out. And in relation to the noise, yeah, we can add a condition, Chair, in connection with the construction management plan. So we can have that if members are minded to approve. But we would welcome this application, given that it's going to bring this heritage asset back into use and its current condition, and we therefore recommend it for approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Stuart. Do members have any questions? No? Okay, Ken. Obviously, I think we've all seen the pictures, you know, this is in a bad state of repair, this particular building. I think it will be a positive improvement in the area. And subject to the additional condition in relation to a construction management plan in mind, would that the recommendation be approved? That agreed.
Thank you, Chair. Any further comments from members before I move to the vote? No? In which case, Chair, your vote, please.
For.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Cargill?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Matt?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Prince?
For.
Thank you. Councillor Maloney?
For.
Councillor Lake, please?
For.
Thank you. And councillor Key?
For.
Thank you. That concludes the voting on this application. Note that councillor Hanson was not present for part of this application, if I have not called his vote on this occasion. Correct. The outcome of the vote on this occasion is, if those members present, the vote is unanimous and therefore the application is approved, subject to the additional condition and the conditions included in the case officer's report. Chair, if we move to our next item. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Eight, nine and 10 have been withdrawn, so we move to item 11, the Claremont Hotel, 70 Lower Breck Road, Liverpool 6. And we have Mark Gates. Who's going to address the committee?
Hello? Can you hear me?
I hope you can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, this is an application submitted a little while ago. The applicant purchased the building at the start of the year and intended to convert it into six apartments. The main issue is the building itself. First, on the outside, appears in quite good condition. The roof has quite a lot of issues, and there's quite a lot of water and grass. If you go to the next slide, please. You'll see some of the pictures. Picture on the left is the first floor, which has damp issues, but has been vacant for some time. And picture on the right is part of the roof structure, which has partly collapsed due to water and yes, that looks like things. So the building itself is in pretty poor condition, particularly on the upper two floors of the ground floor. The pub seems to be where most of the maintenance has taken place. The pub was vacant for a while, I'm not sure particularly how long, prior to the applicant purchasing the building. But the applicant cannot, due to his religious beliefs, run the pub. So his original proposal was to convert it into six apartments. The case officer advised against this and required more information in order to change the pub into two apartments. So the application was then revised to retain the pub on the ground floor and to convert the upper two floors into four apartments.
Is that Mark? Could I just stop you for a moment? We seem to be getting an echo here. We can hear one person, we can hear one person. So one person needs to speak at the sound of the ride. We're just getting echo.
Sorry. No, it's just me, but I'm not sure if there's sound issues. Is that any better?
It's the way it's going on while you're speaking. Can we just stop for a moment?
I don't know where I'm now. There is a lot more to add. If you can skip to the next slide, I can just try and sum it up concisely. See, the application is to retain the pub externally, as it is now, with the exception of remending the opening and moving the main entrance to the pub to the Lower Breck Road, which was advised by the case officer. Other than that, the building will look externally as it is now, but it will be better maintained. The roof should be repaired where required, made good. Just skip to the next slide, please. Probably difficult to see from where you are, but essentially the access to the pub is very, very limited. We can, however, have a separate access for the residents. So that's what's being proposed, is to make the main entrance to the Sapporo site for residents only. And the pub itself would be accessed off Lower Breck Road and would be kept as it is now. Therefore, your residents would have access to the upper two floors, which, if you look at the plans that are submitted separately, you'll see is two one-bed apartments per floor. The applicant wanted two bed apartments originally, but the space standards prohibited it. So we only have a total of four one-bed apartments being proposed now. That's all, really, the application. There is a small courtyard which has been proposed in terms of bin storage that seemed to be to satisfy the case officer in terms of the size and location of that. Yeah, so that's.
Okay, thanks for that, Mark. Do members of the committee have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you for that, Mark. Now, I'll ask the case officer to summarise this.
Chair, I don't propose to say a great deal on this particular proposal. It's a fairly minor application by the standards of this committee. It's normally a type of application that would be dealt under delegated authority, but as you can see from the report, we have on this occasion received quite a significant number of objections, and therefore considered it prudent to bring it to your attention. However, the principal development and the issues are relatively straightforward. This is an application to convert the upper floors of the public house to residential accommodation. You've heard from the applicant that the initial number had now been reduced following discussions with your officers, so that we've got compliance with the nationally prescribed space standards. There's a separate access. There's some commentary in the report about accessibility, and you'll see there that we've not been able to achieve. not been able to achieve full accessibility with this particular proposal. That's not unusual for conversions of this type and obviously there has to be a degree of pragmatism where we're dealing with conversions of sort of properties. In terms of impact on neighbouring amenity, again, the relationship is consistent with that in the surrounding area. There's no parking associated with it, but again, given the limited number of flats, we don't consider that to be a particular problem. So for all the reasons set out in the report Chair, we're happy to recommend approval. I would just add that in relation to condition eleven, that is no longer required, there are no obscured windows required, it's going to be a blank elevation there. Thank you.
Thanks John. Councillor Hanson.
Thank you John, excuse me. The accessibility issue, you know, we are saying that we can't meet the standards and then we just brush this aside and I move on, you know, so I'm not, not being condescending, but you know, to say that, well, we have issues like this in other buildings, I'm just move on, should we be just moving on? If that accessibility standard can't be reached, what, what is a planning committee? I'm in essence saying the, we have a real regulation, but we're ignoring it, or not ignoring it, but tempering it.
So, sorry Chair, I don't mean to be dismissive of the accessibility at all. What I was trying to say is that there is an issue around accessibility and we tried to address that within the report and the reasons for that. In order to reach full accessibility in relation to this property, you would require the installation of a lift to reach the part N42 standard. Now, in introducing a lift, you've obviously got to make significant alterations both at the ground floor and the upper floor in order to deliver that. One of the things that was suggested by our inclusive design officer was whether or not there could be a space for a future lift in future years. But again, that brings its own particular challenges as well for the scheme. So we've decided that on balance and given the weight that can be applied at the moment to the accessibility policies within the draft local plan, we felt on balance in this particular case that it's appropriate to allow the scheme without complying with full part N42.
Thanks John. Do members have any other questions? Councillor Lee.
Thanks Chair. It's just about the issue of parking, which you again just brushed on. That building is banded by double yellow lines, it has pedestrian barriers to one side as well. It's also at a point in Lower Breck Road where, which is almost a blind bend, so there's quite rightly no opportunity to park anywhere around the building. That is going to lead to anybody gaining access to the buildings to park in September Road. So has the issue of parking been looked at? Because that road is already full of cars. Has there been any comment from the developer as to how he intends to address parking issues? And there's also at the rear of the building, there is an alleyway which is partly closed, which has become in recent times a well-known dumping spot. And I'm just wondering whether the developer has any plans to take ownership of that and ensure that it remains clear.
In relation to the highway parking issues, I'll bring Andy in, but it does say that that there are no issues in relation to highway issues, I think. So I'll bring Andy in, if you'd like to make comments on that.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, this is a development of four flats, one bedrooms, in an area where there's relatively low levels of car ownership. We wouldn't expect that people moving in here to all own cars and multiple cars, saying, you know. There are W lines around the junction of Lower Breck Road and September Road to prohibit any car parking taking place there and Lower Breck Road in the main is restricted. So that just leaves September Road as available space. And whilst it is well parked up during certain times of the evening, I'd say, and weekends, there's generally some curbside space available, okay. It might be, might not be convenient for residents, it might not be straight outside the front door, but there will be space nearby. You know, I'd add to that as well, it's a relatively accessible location here, so you know, people aren't going to be reliant on owning cars and to get about, you know, all facilities on the doorstep and there's good access to public transport. So we're comfortable with the fact that there's no car parking. Thanks.
Okay, do members have any other questions? Hang on, councillor Hanson and I'll bring you back in councillor.
Can we go back to the point that John raised in terms of accessibility? As I understand this John, you are saying the introduction of a lift would resolve the issues of accessibility?
So the issue Chair, through you, is that in the draft local plan, we now have a policy that requires a specific standard in relation to delivering accessible units. That standard is under the building regulations and it's described as part N42. So in order to achieve that higher standard, so there is a lower standard, if you like, for building regulation purposes, which is N41. In order to deliver N42, which is the accessible standard and which is what is required in our draft local plan, there would be a requirement under that building regulations and local plan policy to have a lift within the building. So because of the challenges associated with the conversion of properties like this, I think it's fair to say that we have to look at these pragmatically, because it's not always can be delivered in the way that part N42 would require. And in this particular case, we've come to the view, set out in the report, that because of the difficulties in putting a lift in the property, both in terms of the ground floor and the upper floors, that it would not be practical to deliver that N42 standard.
So in, sorry, can we go? You don't, I've still got.
I was just going to say. Thanks for that explanation John.
It's a follow-up question Chair, in terms of what is practical? I understand that, the practicality or whatever, but whilst we're applying that practicality, are we discriminating against disabled people? And if we are, and the phase that we are, we're just a staff for us to.
Maybe I could, I mean.
A caring, sharing council.
Well, as I understand it, you know, because of this as an existing building, the conversion, you know, you're limited by the footprint. That's the reason why, on balance, the recommendation from the officers, that it be approved. Well, I don't think discrimination is the right word John. Do you want to come back in John and maybe explain in more detail?
I mean councillor Hanson, you know, is right insofar as this is not an N42 compliant scheme. That is clear in the report, but as with all planning decisions, there is a balance to be struck between delivering new homes and delivering everything that we are trying to do through the local plan, all of the various policies. So yes, we have got a policy in the draft local plan, which says all new homes need to be part N42 compliant. And we are, even though that is a draft policy still at this stage, we are looking to apply it. So as I said earlier, that there's, part of this is about trying to be pragmatic and trying to deliver some additional flats associated, sorry, as part of a wider conversion, but also at the same time acknowledging that the weight to be applied to the local plan policies is not yet full. So, you know, we have to, again, with all planning decisions, look at the wider planning balance and that's what we're trying to do with this particular application in our recommendation to you.
Thanks John, councillor Lee.
Thanks love Chair. I think I should say, before I respond to Andy, I should say that as ward councillor for the area, I do largely support this application, because one wonders what the future of that building would be without this development. I also welcome the fact that the ground floor is to be retained as a pub in an era when we are, it would appear, fast losing pubs at a great rate. Pubs can be in themselves, community hubs, and we mustn't forget that. So I do think it's a worthwhile application. The only thing, the only thing I would contest is the view of low car ownership in the Chubruk and Stony Croft area. This has cropped up a number of times, but the evidence of the eye is that nearly all of the terrace streets that come off Lower Breck Road and West Derby Road are packed with cars, many of whom resort to parking on the pavement, which is another problem altogether. So I do contest the idea, and it is repeated in here on a regular basis, that the area is one of low car ownership, because the evidence of the eye is that it isn't.
Okay. I mean, I don't know whether you want to respond Andy, but I mean, I was saying, I think that's just a comment, a statement of fact in your opinion, isn't it? So can I call councillor Maloney please?
Thanks Chair. Whilst I have a large amount of sympathy for councillor Hanson's comments on disabled access and also for councillor Lake's on car parking, I mean, I do know this location and I think it would be preferable if this building were brought back into full use, albeit I don't, I think that's a higher priority perhaps than the other two considerations overall when balancing this item. Thanks Chair.
Okay. Do any other members got any questions or comments? No? Well therefore, can I move, obviously the explanation from the officers, that it's a pragmatic approach, you know, in this particular application. So therefore, could I move that the recommendation as amended be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair. Any comments from members before I move to the votes? No, in which case Chair, your vote.
Four.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Four.
Thank you councillor Bennett.
Four.
Thank you councillor Cardwell.
Four.
Thank you councillor Hanson.
Abstain.
Thank you councillor Mallat.
Four.
Thank you councillor Prince.
Four.
Thank you councillor Maloney.
Four.
Thank you councillor Lake.
Four.
And councillor Key.
Four.
Thank you. That concludes the voting on this application, that being nine members voting in favour, no members voting against, one abstention, councillor Johansson, in which case the vote is carried and the application is approved. And now we go on to our next item of business. Please note that item numbers twelve and thirteen on the agenda related to New Hall on Longwall Lane will be taken together, both being interlinked applications. Thank you.
Thanks Mike. As you've said, New Hall, Longwall Lane, Liverpool ten, and we have no speakers for or against. So can I ask the case officer to summarise this application and then we'll ask members if they've got any questions or comment?
I will do Chair. Again, I don't want to sort of be entirely dismissive of the application or rush through it, but it is again, a fairly straightforward proposal insofar as it is an application to carry out various refurbishment works to a listed building. So the proposal is to effectively erect an internal structure which will create a mezzanine, so make use of the sort of floors as ceiling heights and create an additional floor, but that's entirely contained within the building. And then there's some minor external works, including a ramped access. So the application is for both planning permission and listed building consent. You'll see from the history Chair, that there's very significant number of applications that have been granted over the years for the New Hall complex and within them, there are a mix of uses. Office use is considered an entirely appropriate use within this particular location. In terms of the impact, obviously this is a great two-listed building, there is a requirement obviously to, under the Act, to have special regard to the protection of the building and any features of special architectural interest. So this has been looked at carefully by our heritage colleagues and they have come to the view that the building can be modified in the way that it is being suggested without significant harm to the listed building or the conservation area. In terms of accessibility, again, there have been some amendments through the application process to try and meet the required standards of accessibility and there is an accidental access ramp with handrails to be provided, which again is considered appropriate and will not have harm to the listed building. So for all of those reasons Chair, your officers are happy with the proposal and recommend approval accordingly.
Thanks John. Do members have any questions, comments? No? Straightforward application, I believe this one. Could I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, just to reiterate, you are voting on the two applications together in one, so both vote, the vote counts for both in the same point. If they mind, Chair, your vote.
Four.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Four.
Thank you councillor Bennett.
Four.
Thank you councillor Cardwell.
Four.
Thank you councillor Hanson. Thank you councillor Mallat.
Four.
Thank you councillor Prince.
Four.
Thank you councillor Maloney.
Four.
Thank you councillor Lake.
Four.
Thank you councillor Key.
Four.
Thank you councillors, that concludes the votes on the application, the vote is unanimous, both applications being, one being for planning consent, one for listed building consent being approved. We move to our next item of business, thank you.
Thanks Mike. The next item is number fourteen, pavements on Pilch lane, junction with Grant Road, Pilch lane, Liverpool fourteen. There are no speakers for or against. Again, can I ask the case officer to summarise this application?
Very quick summary Chair, it's an application for prior approval for the erection of a telecommunications equipment comprising fifteen metre high pole with the associated cabinet. You can see from the site plan the location of it. This is very much the usual form for telecommunications masks. Because it's a prior approval, the only issues that you as a committee are entitled to take into account are the sighting and the design. Your officers' view is that both sighting and the design are appropriate in this location, given the surrounding feature and so on. Have to answer questions.
Thanks John. Do members have any questions or comments? No? Again, can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair, your vote please.
Four.
Thank you councillor Thompson.
Four.
Thank you councillor Bennett.
Four.
Thank you councillor Cardwell.
Four.
Thank you councillor Hanson.
Four.
Thank you councillor Mallat.
Four.
Thank you councillor Prince.
Four.
Thank you councillor Maloney.
Abstain.
Thank you councillor Lake.
Four.
Thank you and councillor Key.
Four.
Thank you councillors, that concludes the votes, nine members in favour, one councillor abstaining, whose abstention will be recorded by name. The application is therefore approved and we move to our next item of business.
Thanks Mike. Item fifteen, land adjacent to seventy-nine Cotswold Street and Fell Street, Liverpool seven. Again, we have no speakers for or against. Can I ask John to summarise this application please?
Okay, thank you Chair. So the application here is for the erection of a total of five dwellings. So you'll see from the site plan that this is a vacant site at the top of the Cotswold Street and Fell Street. So the configuration would be obviously two houses facing onto Cotswold Street and three houses facing onto Fell Street, which will be basically a continuation of the terrace form. The design of the properties reflects that of the existing terrace street. I think what's relevant, particularly relevant here is the previous application where you'll see that an application to erect an almost identical form of development, albeit to use as HMOs, was refused by your officers under delegated authority and the subsequent appeal was dismissed because of concerns about the impact. So clearly in terms of principal development, this is considered appropriate and again, as I said, the design and form of the buildings is very in line with the. And again, as I said, the design and form of the buildings is very in line with the existing properties. The relationship in terms of interbase distances again reflects the current relationship. So again, your officers are happy with that. In terms of technical housing standards, it's compliant. And equally in terms of accessibility, it does meet, in this particular case, the pass M four two standards. Highways colleagues have looked at it and again, they're satisfied that given the nature of the surrounding area, given the nature of the properties and so on, that this is, that the properties will be acceptable. There wouldn't be any significant highways or parking problems associated with the scheme. So for all of those reasons, Chair, we've recommended approval subject to the stated conditions. Just on that issue of the HMO and the previous scheme, clearly, we now have the article four in direction in place. So there is no requirement to put on any additional conditions associated with trying to restrict that use, given what's happened before, because there is no permitted development rights for that conversion in this area. Happy to answer questions, Chair.
Thanks, John. Do members have any questions or comment? Councillor Malow.
Thanks, Chair. Really, it's a technical question. I mean, it looks to me from the drawings have just been shown that the new buildings will be very much in keeping with the existing stock, which I would guess is late Victorian Edwardian terraces. So my question is, are the standards for insulation in these new builds better than they were for those old solid two-brick-thick walls?
Thanks, Chair. I would hope so, Chair, because they will need to apply for building regulations and the building regulations will require a minimum standard. But it's not something, unfortunately, for this planning committee to consider.
Thanks, John. Any other questions or comments? Councillor Lake, you've got your microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, these houses are for single-family occupation. So I think as John has explained, we have the article four in place anyway. So on that basis, can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you. Same process as before. Chair, your vote.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Thompson.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Bennett.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Cardwell.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Hanson.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Mallett.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Prince.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Maloney.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Lake.
Four.
Thank you. And councillor Key.
Four.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous and the application approved accordingly. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Mike. We now move to our final item on today's agenda, which is item sixteen, Central Reservation, opposite two hundred and eleven Menlo Avenue, Liverpool eighteen. And again, we've got no speakers for or against. Can I ask Stuart to take us through this application, please?
Thank you, Chair. Members will be familiar with such applications which are being driven by the demand for 5G technology and the highest areas of demand tend to be residential areas. This application was originally submitted as a twenty metre high mast and the mast has been reduced in height to fifteen metres following negotiations by your officers. And it's also proposed in a location so as to be as far away from residential properties as possible whilst having to have a regard to the catchment area it is to serve. Whilst mast sharing is the preferred option, to try to do so in this case would require a much higher and wider mast so as to accommodate multiple operators. And therefore, the reduced fifteen metre high mast is considered the most appropriate option so as to minimise visual impact, given that there are no other 5G masts within line of sight. And it would also have a backdrop of lighting columns and trees which will also mitigate that impact. The mast can be accommodated without any damage to existing street trees and this has been demonstrated through our cultural impact assessments. And on the back of that, Chair, we're happy to recommend it for approval as being the optimal solution.
Do members have any questions or comments? Councillor Lake and councillor Malow.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'd just like to ask a question that I think I've asked before. We know that the need is driven by consumption, by people wanting to access media platforms, et cetera, and I'm fully accepting of that. But I think the question that I've asked before is, how many of these things are there and will there be? Is anybody keeping count of the amount that is in any given ward? I think I've asked this question directly because the propensity of them continues to grow and along with all the other street furniture that we see on the highway. There is going to become a point where these things will become incongruous with the surroundings and they will cause concern. So I'd like to know, in any given ward, how many are there? And how many is it intended for there to be?
As I understand it, I mean, these applications are driven by demand and that's the whole basis of it. And obviously, you know, we're not allowed to, if you like, challenge, you know, the reason for them or whether there's any health issues. I'm not sure whether Stuart can answer the question of how many masts there is. But that's the reason behind it.
I think the only people who can actually answer that question are probably the network operators. I should probably be aware, there's four of them and they all require a mast, which is why we advocate mast sharing wherever possible to minimise the number. With any network, the signal will be beamed out from a mast and it will have a certain distance that it will travel before it needs another mast. And where you don't have that coverage, that's where your gaps appear and where the demand for the additional masts are. I genuinely could not tell you how many of these we're going to get. All you can do is deal with each one on its merits. And if you're not happy that its size or its design is appropriate, the committee is well within its rights to review it on that basis. Clearly, that may well leave a gap in the network, but that's what you have to balance against the visual impact of such. But I couldn't sit here and say each ward's going to have fifteen, twenty, or how many we've still got to come in down the line. Sorry.
Okay. Thanks for that, Stuart. councillor Maloney.
Thanks, Chair. My question is a bit more about the aesthetics of the street cabinets. There seems to be a large number. I think there were four or five street cabinets associated with this one mast. And whilst I appreciate there's quite a lot of complex equipment that has to be housed in these street cabinets, I think there's also the issue of different networks sharing the same mast, albeit with each having their own antenna and presumably their own street cabinets. I just wonder, is there any mileage in trying to reduce the size of the street or the number of the street cabinets and therefore reduce the impact on the pavement? Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I'll try and best answer that. The number of cabinets will be technologically required to service the mast. The cabinets in themselves don't actually require planning permissions, just the mast. It's just because they're there, they form part of the description, but they can put the cabinets up without planning permission and we can't stop the number as long as they're under a certain size. And they always are because that's the way they manufacture them for that reason. So, yeah, they'll only provide cabinets that are necessary, otherwise it's not in their interest to provide extra kit. So again, it's probably one for the operator in terms of the number of cabinets that you need as a minimum. But they don't actually need planning permission. So, yeah.
Thanks for that, Stuart. Is there any other questions or comments with members? No? Well, therefore, can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you. Same process as before. Chair, your vote.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Thompson.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Bennett.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Cardwell.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Hanson.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Mallett.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Prince.
Four.
Thank you. councillor Maloney.
Abstain.
Thank you. councillor Lake.
Four.
Thank you. And councillor Key.
Four.
Thank you, councillors. That concludes the vote. As votes is nine members in favour, no members against, one abstention. And the recommendation is therefore carried on that basis. And that concludes our items of business. Time now reverse to the Chair for closing comments.
Thanks, Mike. Obviously, we've had a long meeting this morning and I would just like to thank you all for your participation and your patience. So thank you and I hope you have a good rest of the day. Thank you. Bye-bye.